...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had their umbrellas today, I hope. Very good. Starting off, we're talking about a joint meeting with the building inspector and Mr. Yumel.
I talked to him today. I talked to him today that he came to me, he started being concerned why he has to come to every meeting. He says, "You're not required to come here. We're asking the building inspector to come and give us an update on your progress. We're not requiring him to be here, but if you want to come here, it's an open meeting. Come here and ask questions, or you can disagree with Mr. Alexsack's opinion. Well, we're looking for an update as far as how things are coming out there.
Yeah, just for clarification for those who don't know, there's a piece of property on Former Road that has a lot of, i.e., equipment on it and whatnot, and it seems to be that it's not appropriate. And so, the building inspector is here to talk about cleaning up that property.
I took pictures while I was there last Thursday. Yeah, nothing has been done. Now, I've got a problem set to do from Hatch to Baker's Division. One of them is ours, Lawrence. And he said one of the drains was moved today, so.
I don't know, but I think we should for our protection, because they're talking about the insurer. They're insured by nobody's side.
What we've been looking for has been moved in two months.
Now, there is, there are obviously a lot of vehicles that were oil and diesel in them, and maybe gas, and there is a book that does run right through the property.
There is.
Is that Redbrook, or is that part of it?
It goes down Redbrook.
That goes into Redbrook, and so I'm sure that's a wetlands area, so that's another concern with some of the petroleum products there.
The guy from last 15 years.
But they rent this stuff.
Right. I'll take the property, D E P, and I think there's something to be done up there.
Must modify the coverage.
So, we're. Take the town, but I think we definitely live in town, so.
So, what is the expectations of, of, of the timeline to get this equipment out of there?
The board gave them until October 1st.
September 1st.
September 1st.
September 1st.
September 1st.
Okay. And is, is conservation concerned about any monitoring of the wetlands up there?
Well, they're leaving everything in our, in all in our court, so. I figure this thing's getting cleaned up and done, don't worry about what's, what's been left behind.
Are there, are there drums there? Are there batteries there?
All of them are clearly shot.
And so, how do we know that's not hazardous waste and toxic waste? Okay. So, there's no.
We've been nice for 15 years, General.
Okay.
Do you want to start playing hardball now, or?
Well, I think we already started playing hardball, and we told them to come in here and give us a timeframe, and now we're going to stick it to it.
The night we met here, with him here, he talked me the way out, and I was tired of working right away, but I'd be saying, "Adel, today one piece of equipment has been moved."
He did tell me today you're going to come and show us some pictures, and he hasn't moved any trucks yet. He's saying the water, to me, the water has slowed him down, but he has opened up the way, the roadways in there to get the things out easier. That's an attempt, but it's not moving anything as far as I'm concerned. That's how he reads it. My comment is, we want an update on a monthly basis, how it's going, because we want to document this stuff. Come September 1st, we expect to clean. Are there's other options?
What happens if it's not done by September 1st?
Then we put the original proposal from the lawyer.
So, Reg, can we make sure that Rich is on the schedule on a monthly basis, so we can, just for this one issue that could be put on the agenda?
Are we done with that for now? Well, we're just here. Because there's other ones of these around town. I mean, the one that's most noticeable now is the one down on County Road, because I now have to use East Street to go to work on the old farm on the corner of County Road and East. I mean, he's got a ton of stuff sitting in the.
And I just said, registered motor vehicles and everything about it is a farm supposedly. It is a registered farm. So, farms would have trucks with getting cars under property, stored with no plates.
But that, but that, well, what about our bylaws?
Our bylaws are nothing. When I registered vehicle, in residential.
I mean, he's got a ton of stuff.
Yeah, I know, a lot from around Bravo.
What's he saying?
Reggie, he said, "He didn't have it." He said, "I checked the registry, and I checked what the registry doing, and it said, "Yeah, you're going to have trucks and tractors in a barn, but I hope you're registered."
But no limit to the number?
What he did, he took all the trucks from Bob over there, Bob's Auto, and he put them all in his backyard.
But they're not there for the intent of farming?
No, they're not.
There's got to be something, you know, he can't just turn that into a junkyard by calling in a farm.
Is it an active farm? Is he actually farming?
In case.
He plants, he used to plant some corn across the street, but I don't know whether he even still, but it doesn't look like the fields have been planted this year or even turned.
He works out of that fire, so he wants to eventually come in and get it from it, turn it into an active farm over here, but I don't see that happening.
But I, I can take you back 20 years, and he came into the planning board, and he's the reason we have a farm lien cluster development, and we never, never went any further with that either.
Actually, it went to the point that it was approved by.
Yeah, it was.
To move, move ahead and build that.
Right.
Special kind of subdivision, and it never went forward.
And he, you know. But that one, you know, if we're going to, in all fairness to Mr. Yumel, if we're going to chase him because he's got a lot of vehicles on his property, we should be fair to everybody in town and apply the rules uniformly. But, I mean, if he takes all the Bob, the trucks from Bob's, then that's, that's not like a broken-down tractor on your property. That's moving stuff on the property.
That was already declared junk.
That's already been declared junk.
I would think. Went to a junkyard to get rid of it.
I mean, he's got to have 10 or 15 or 20 down here, and they're all nice bright yellow. They're not a nice farm green there.
But when you turn a car into a junkyard, don't you have to give up the title? As it's, because then it's no longer.
If you got a title.
Yeah, if you got a title, it's a junk title.
Some of those trucks will be four titles.
Yeah.
The registry might go about it all day.
Well, I don't see. But the point is, it's, it's, registry takes care of on-registered, for registered vehicles. They don't come in and deal with zoning bylaws of a town. That's not their forte. And I think we ought to look into seeing what we have and how it's being applied. If it's applied the proper way, I have no problem with it, but if it's, if it's not being applied, we need to, to enforcement.
I think maybe we contact with Tom Attorney to see, you know, this business about unregistered, declaring it a farm, active farm, does that exempt him from all our bylaws, especially this junk? I mean, there's still a situation of all the hazardous waste that's in those vehicles.
These are wetlands in that area?
Not in that particular area. But just to reiterate what Mike's saying, I think we, we need to be a little more observant on anything happening like that in town, and be proactive and get involved with it.
Taking that back, isn't that part of the Barnes Aquaphar over there?
Yes.
So, I mean, you're, you're sitting on a potential largest aquifer in, in the area, but I think we ought to talk to Tom Attorney to see if, like, declaring a farm, he gets to keep all that stuff from, from a junkyard. But I think pictures should be involved. I think, you know, you can say what's there, but I think he took pictures.
Just drive down East Street and.
What about when he sent it to the attorneys? I think the attorney should see images of what we're talking about, instead of just a description.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Visual.
I'll take the pictures, I'll give the reg, and her, and all the fossils.
Is there anybody else around that we've got that problem with, any other ones? I mean, I just happened to see that.
I guess, I guess the one down there on 55 East Street, I'm fighting with her right now, right on the bridge.
Yes.
Yeah, those vehicles are within 100 feet of the water, and that should be a conservation issue.
She's hitting her antique cars, blah, blah, blah.
That Brown one that's got enough stuff on the windshield?
Yeah.
Starting to grow trees of its own?
I work with her too. Like I said, I work with everybody. Nobody likes people, whatever.
Maybe the wrong term is work with.
Like I said, you get, you get more fly with honey than you do vinegar, so. And being nicely, people, stuff on it.
I think maybe you ought to pull off a badge at this point, Todd.
All right, so you're going to meet with us on a monthly basis regarding the Former Road party?
Yeah.
Property. It's close to 640, isn't it? Did I say 640?
Yeah, well, we have, Dave, back on that issue, there are concerns that, when you and I walked out there about that, that are conservation concerns. I think we need to find out, conservation's been out there, and have them come in and report to us like Rich in regards to that.
People pay for every day, our farmer.
I know. And, but Art is not the chairman, he can't, Art can't speak for the board unless the board took an action.
Why don't we send a letter to the conference of conservation from us, saying we have concerns after viewing the property, that this could be a conservation issue with the, I mean, the, the stream is right there. I mean, trucks are parked basically on top of the stream. Because that does come, you know, it does come down a corner that ends up in the man and.
No, it's two separate sets of rules and regulations.
Well, do you want to just wait till September, then?
I'm going to ask him to at least go out there and take a, an active approach on, is, is there issues or not, like Rich said? They left them in his hands, but we want to hear from them.
So, do you want to write a letter to them, or what do you want?
No, and ask them to come in and give us an opinion.
Okay.
To the board on what their feeling is about there. And we would hope they would take at least a, a visit to the site. Give us an opinion.
Reg, can you get in touch with Charlie and see if he can come by and, you know, ask him to take a walk over there? I don't know if you could coordinate with, with Charlie and just take a look, maybe even Ed. I mean, I'm no expert on conservation, but those trucks are right on top of the stream, and there are a lot of batteries over there as well, large batteries, large cell batteries, and track trailers full of all kinds of stuff, including tires, I think.
Well, excuse me, but again, what are the bylaws for these kinds of trucks on this property?
Oh, it is. That's a construction equipment, that, but this is stock construction equipment.
So, why don't we send a letter stating that the bylaws?
Oh, yeah. Well, they did go out for 15 years.
So, then, so then why don't you fine them?
Well, we might have to.
Jackie, we came here and we got a letter, and we didn't have any representation from Mr. Yumel, so we brought Mr. Yumel in, and we explained to him, and he pleaded with us as a group, to give him some time, he would clean it up before this would have to happen. And we all agreed, we would give him to September 1st. But we also said we want Rich to give us a monthly report on the activities that's there. At one point, I think he left a message with Reggie that he was going to start soon because he was all done his other job, he would put all his attention toward this project, and that's where he is now, I believe. And Rich has talked to him. He seeks me out every time he drives down the road, so, but I'm telling him, I'm not talking to him as a board of selectmen's member, I'm just telling him, "This is the history, we need to address it, and you need to deal with Rich. If, if it doesn't become an issue, you'll be dealing with the board. We do have a commitment by September 1st." And that's how he left it.
Okay, so if by September 1st he doesn't.
Then with this, what the lawyer presented us to do would, would be in effect.
So, what are the fines? What does the bylaw say?
$10 a day.
$10 a day?
I think it's per vehicle law.
Oh. There's a lot of vehicles there. But I think it's, it would be, you know, I think it would be important for Charlie to take a look at what's over there, because it's stuff that I saw that I didn't think was appropriate for wetlands protection, and I don't know if those are things that Charlie would have a better, keener eye for. So, I think we need to, if it's, if that, there was a case of Wetlands Protection Act violation, then I think September 1st may be too far off, and may have to, you know, expedite removal of some of the equipment.
Hey.
The other thing too, Rich, he made a comment to me, leaving that he wanted to keep the trailers there. I says, "I, I don't know if you keep the trailers or not, you need to deal with Rich Alexsack. He is an enforcement officer, and he will tell you what you can do and can't do." And we're expecting him to do that. But he, he's trying to see about keeping the trailers there. I'm just giving you heads up.
All right. And now, we're talking about two other pieces of property, Camp John and College Highway.
Yeah.
You want to start with the Camp John property? Just fill some back, backfills, I'm unfamiliar with what's.
Camp John was the house that we condemned, or house condemned, I condemned it. We had a structural near-year call through, and he said, "The house has got to come down." He ordered a house, Mr. Mount, Mount Katie, wait, okay. Said, "That's fine, I haven't, don't have any money, so tear it down, probably not a property. I've got somebody aggressive buying it, what's the house, what's going on?" And now I've been waiting for almost a month for a D E P to get back with the, "Okay, to tear it down." He finally called me today from D E P, and said, "You're ready to go." I just called today, "Well, the truck crane and Westfield to tear it down, and we'll be able to get back to tomorrow morning."
Do we need to do anything as board of selectmen, or is everything just?
Everything's done, legally, we signed our letter, got all the signatures, everything's in place legally, so we're ready to go.
Do we have, do we have all that stuff as a package here?
We had it off, there it is.
Now, was this the homeowner's primary address?
It was, but he moved out. He was on order, sort of place, boys.
So, he's not homeless, he does have housing.
He's living with his girlfriend now.
All right, good.
Just out of curiosity, are you sure?
No, go ahead.
We had some bids. I'm curious, we had Associated Building Records, everybody seems to have two bids in here. One, why is?
With asbestos, one was without asbestos.
Oh, okay.
And he came in, D E P came in and checked, and said, "It's asbestos."
Okay.
So, it was going to be a higher bid.
So, but am I wrong, Associated was still less even with the asbestos? So, why are we?
Without the asbestos was $9,000, with the asbestos was $16,800.
Right, and then Truck Crane was higher. Why are we picking Truck?
Well, Truck Crane came in here and gave us a bid of, not to exceed $20,000. So, I'm working with Truck Crane now, I says, you know, I says, "If you can beat an associate, we'll give it to you," because he's already done, they had the testing done for the asbestos. He sent that on by some company on Bammers.
Can you deal with such a vague bid when somebody else is being precise?
Well, as I say, he's coming back with the.
But after he saw the other bids.
Yeah, but you can't.
I called him, because he, he took the initiative to start with all the stuff home for us.
Yeah, but you can't, you.
But I need to pay for that.
We need to go out for a bid again. If you're going to, if someone's going to be told what the bid is, and someone else is going to get a chance to know.
No, he called me, he said, he came in, he said, you know, he said, "I'll be around 16,500." He said, you might have been there that day when he was there.
Well, I was there that day, I didn't have all the particulars, but we have to make sure, we're not spending, we're spending eventually his money to pay for this, and I don't want to be sued because we missed a technicality.
We didn't take the lowest bid.
And I, I, it's vague, Rich, that he gave you not to exceed 20, and you sat down and negotiated with him. That wasn't spelled out in the original bid, so you really can't do that.
It was based on the asbestos, and that was his problem. That's why D E P was there, and this company on Bammers, let's see what they had for asbestos. Does anyone have to go to New York, or they have to go to Ohio, or it's all done?
Rich, I think what he is saying is.
I know, I know what he's saying.
It's the protocol of the bidding process, and so, the homeowner could come back and sue, and say, "We took the more expensive."
I'll comment, "Okay, you think that's okay, but before we do it."
Yeah, but, Rich, what we're doing is, you had two people who gave you bona fide not to, a definite bid, Moké gave you not to exceed 20,000, and you took it upon yourself to negotiate that down to the lowest bid. I don't think you can do that, unless you're doing it for all three.
So, maybe about, I mean, it's irregular.
I mean, I might be wrong, but I'm not on the bench so the town council would agree with me.
I think you got to go out to bid again. You got to start over. I don't think you can give it to Truck Crane just because they were nice guys and were willing to do some work ahead, because I'm assuming that the Associated bid was, was... The, for, one bid from Associated was $9,500, and the other is $16,850, so I'm assuming the $16,850 was the asbestos bid. Am I right or wrong?
Right, but then what are you doing with the asbestos? See, that's why I gave you two prices.
Right, and then Truck.
I'm not sure there's asbestos in there, but I got to figure it both ways.
Right, and then Truck Crane gave you a bid for $22,500, and not to exceed 20, but in either case, they're more than... I just think before.
We have to have a total bid for the job, you know, and it's good, we got to have three. We don't have to have three written, but we have to send out three.
Requests.
Request.
Do we have three?
I got the third one, yeah.
Who's that? Did they bid or just chose not to bid?
Oh, Whitey.
And what did he?
Not Whitey.
And what did he bid?
$22,000.
But I think he's.
Well, this thing is vague. I'm sorry, you got to rebid it. I'm making a motion that it's rebided.
Yeah, Rich, I think you got it, because otherwise we're going to open a can of worms, and, and everybody's got to be on the same playing field. Everybody's got to know the same set of facts when they go bid it, so that when they... Now, we know there's asbestos, so you can send it out, rebid. Everybody gives you a fixed bid with the work, knowing that there's asbestos, and it's got to go to the low bidder.
Okay.
Unless there's a reason not to pick the low bidder.
But that has to be documented.
That has to be documented too, yeah.
So, there's, for the reason not to take the low bidder, you have to have a really good reason not to. So, do you mind reposting?
Not at all.
Please, again, it's, it's better to catch this kind of thing now, before it becomes an issue, gets blown out of proportion by people that may not understand the whole process.
Okay.
A second.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, oh, yeah, the rebid.
Ed, make a motion.
I have those in favor.
Hi.
Thank you, Rich.
Oh, you got one more?
Yeah, wow, yeah, 232 College.
232 College, that way is the building right down the road here, with the junk houses and the slides, and the tables and chairs that are out front, and the tents, the balloons, solid balloons, and we received a complaint from the, the Star Commission, which they said that is a star district, and they feel that the looks of the building and everything else don't fit with the star part of our town.
Okay, but they put the Butler Building there in one year.
Well, that was a long time.
That was always residential, though. That was never put into a, a commercial property. So, what happened was about three years ago, Mr. Rice came in and went in front of the zoning board, and the zoning board told him that they could use that property as commercial village property, because it was residential, but the building was there, they were erecting it out. So, that was approved by the zoning board.
I might have to abstain myself. I did rent the building at one point, so. Should I leave the room, Mike?
No, I mean, you're not, you don't have any connection with it now.
Yeah, so now, like I say, because it is resident, but it still is basically residential, being used as commercial.
What's our, what's our rules on... So, it is, it's in a residential zone, but it's being used as commercial, and they got a Z B A permit to do so? What did that permit, permit allow them to do?
They just said, whatever is allowed in by a zoning bylaws under commercial village was allowed in that property.
All right, so what's allowed in commercial villages regards signage and displays?
Well, like I said, sign is allowed, but there's nothing in our bylaws about displays of junk houses or.
So, isn't that a form of advertisement?
Well, you know, our bylaw adds, I'll let you hear. What do you do on bylaw, I don't know. Amusement or recreational service, recreation service, is not allowed in any residential or commercial village. Now, who's going to interpret that as amusement or recreation service?
Recreation service, you didn't pay for it.
What's a bouncy house? Is that?
For children.
I know what it is, I'm sorry.
Actually, hurt myself in going with the grandkids. Jackie, you'd be doing that more than you think. But I mean, it's, it's a description, does it not?
What is it, what, do we address temporary structures in the bylaw anywhere? Because that's all these are, are temporary structures. So, how long can they have a temporary structure up?
We have dumping that.
There's a whole can of worms with that, because they have all that signage at some places that's air-supported, that's inflated by fans, that all of a sudden you have a large sign along the side of the road, displaying something that wasn't there before.
Yeah, it wasn't there before, but the bylaws don't anticipate those signs either.
But I'm saying the tent and the tables and chair.
I brought a photo, we'll take a lot of stuff that is original, it's a hole.
But how far up does the highway go past the lawn? I mean, are they actually putting this, like, on state property?
State property is 75 feet.
So, it has to be on state property.
If you see the town fence at Coner Park, that's on one foot in, on town property.
So, some of that stuff is on state property, may be inappropriate, even though it's in front of the building. That would take care of the chairs and stuff, it's a hazard, so it should go off the roadway.
So, we are writing to town to move it out to state property?
No. The state would have to.
No, it's not.
No, no, but I'm just saying, the state would have to come in and.
Park could. On the park property, you couldn't.
Is it on?
I, I just think, my recommendation is, you need to have a conversation with the owner. Sit down, talk with him, you know, and tell him the situation, and see if he wants to cooperate. I think that might be the best thing to do at this point, and not, not the people who are renting it, I'm talking about the owner. And talk to him, and maybe he's not aware of this stuff, you know.
Or even Florida, so.
I know.
Oh, he's in the brown house?
Yes.
Why don't we, why don't we expand this to have the owner of the building and the renter come in and see if we can rearrange something?
Yeah, but what are we going to tell? We don't even, I mean, should we talk to Rich, who's the enforcement officer on these zones? And if there's a variance needed, he needs to apply for variance, not us, we don't issue the variance.
No, I mean, I was just thinking, you're trying to get along with him and ask him.
Yeah, I think we should, that's our first attempt, as Rich says, being one of the fuzzy.
Ask him, we've got a complaint, you know, you don't want to incur the wrath of.
Yeah, you got a complaint from the government agency.
See if, see if they'll cooperate and get rid of the tables and chairs and the tent. They've been up for six months already, they got, they got.
No, I, I don't know if it's rumor, but is he moving? Or is that just?
He's not by that place over on Connor.
Is he buying the house across the street, put it over there?
Over here, over there, Tom, there's a, I guess, the, the, the place on Connor, or what, probably not.
Who was looking at that?
The, the party control.
Oh, to rent that space?
To buy it.
They must be doing it really well.
Well, Rich, do what you can. If you can't, I'm, I'm sure the board would be happy to help, help with you on this issue.
Okay.
And give them a copy of the concerns from the, of the Star Society, let them know. I don't know.
See if they won't do it voluntarily rather than get involved with the legal process.
Something like that?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I just wondered, the Camp John property, so if he has to get bids again, they just have to be, well, they can be written or phone bids, I guess, right?
They should be written, I think it's.
So then does he have to come back to you guys again and have you?
Yes.
Warn it to someone?
Yes.
They're trying to get this W for the first of July, so.
There is a timeframe. I think you, you gotta give him at least two weeks once you put it out there.
To bid?
It just has to be.
Oh, to get a bid back. Oh, I thought you were talking about Mr. Moké again.
No.
It just has to be done the right way. And, and, you know, damn the time, but it has to be done the right way.
Um, Rich, another question I have is, I know we came in here, the board gave you permission, but I don't think the board realized it's gonna cost this kind of money at the time. Now they do, I believe. Um, this is something that we can lean and when the property is sold, we'll be reimbursed. And I would ask Donna, do we have money to take care of this?
Well, I talked to Vicky and we do, I guess, you can look at it a couple different ways. One, we do have some line items, budget lines that have not been spent and don't, probably won't be spent, um, this year, like the administrative assistance line, where there's twenty-seven thousand dollars left in that line. This, during this period between June and July fifteenth, at the end of a fiscal year, the finance committee and select board can vote to transfer money from a, one line to another. That's the only time it can be done. So, obviously, if that didn't happen to pay, say, to pay for this, then we'd come out of, then we don't know where it come out of.
You have to go through.
But if it does, it's gonna lower our free cash by then. If we have to take it out of free cash, if we don't do it, um, that way, before we make a transfer, before July fifteenth from the fiscal thirteen budget, then it would have to wait until after free cash is certified.
Why don't we just take? Why don't we just take twenty thousand that's in that budget line and put it in a, in a line, either in our expense account, select board expense account, to pay for the destruction and removal of the home? If there's, if there's cash left over, then that would just go back into the general fund.
Right.
That's easier said than done because, um, we don't have an existing line item for it to be transferred to. So we have to establish an existing line item, like maybe that money could be put into reserve fund and the finance committee, this is unforeseen thing, that could come out of the reserve fund.
But, because if you transfer, if you set up a transfer now, you're gonna transfer it in the thirteen budget.
No, I was saying, we only have until July.
Right, but you won't spend it in the thirteen budget, it's in, it really needs to be.
The work's gonna be done in fourteen.
It's gonna be done in fourteen and paid in fourteen, so you can't do that. You can get, you can transfer it into the line, but then you can't spend it, cause it's wrong your budget.
So that's a good.
Well, if it's, if it's, if you, if you set up a line, now you'd have to check, double check that, but I believe if you set up a line and you transferred the money in there, she can carry forward money with a letter or, you know, a request from a department for either an encumbrance or, you know, you know that you're gonna incur this. So that is a reason to carry money forward to the new fiscal year.
I know, but that would be thirteen money for thirteen operations. But now we're gonna be looking at fourteen operation, year fourteen operation. And my concern is, it's a new budget and it could come, it can come out of free cash and set aside to take care of that eventually, but in the meantime, in, in two thousand and fourteen, we have a reserve fund that takes care of unforeseen things. It could cover this thing right after July one, if we can talk to the finance committee. And that, they would either get the money back from free cash to put it back to its levels or the money could come if the lien is taken care of and somebody buys the property right away.
Well, that's fine. I just didn't know the finance committee would be willing to take that kind of money out of the reserve account in July. And I would hope that this wouldn't sit until October.
No, I, I think we all wanna get this done as soon as possible.
And I also did make a call to DOR to see, you know, and I actually, he said he had never been, posed this question before, to see if we could borrow, but then if we borrow for it, you know, it's, it's a small amount of money. So how long would you borrow because you have no idea when you're gonna get it back? The property taxes are being paid.
Let's just put it in free cash and then take it out of free cash next year. Why can't we do that?
Well, let's one way, but in the meantime, free cash is not gonna come around till around December. We're gonna have bills to pay, so it's gotta come from some instrument, which I say is a reserve fund.
Give you the twenty thousand, I'll put it in my savings account and I'll give it back to you.
No, it's gotta, it's gotta be a reserve account transfer. This is truly an unexpected.
And it will be, it will be reimbursed.
At some point.
So you wanna transfer the funds now into the reserve?
No, you can't.
We can't. You gotta let them know.
You gotta let them know. We send them a note saying that we, we anticipate that we're gonna request a twenty thousand dollar transfer.
Well, it should be less than twenty. I mean, the low bid was sixteen, so.
But, but tell them twenty so that they're prepared for twenty. If it comes out sixteen, oh, well, that's all well and good, but.
But in the meantime, are they meeting tonight?
Yeah, they're up there.
Well, after we get done here, I'll go upstairs and tell them. And then, Rich, you can follow it up and.
And we anticipate a request for twenty thousand.
Cause it's right, straddling both years and we could be in.
Cause if you're saying he needs two weeks to.
He's gonna have to have.
Two, it's July first. Or later.
I mean, I think it was just July fourteenth.
Does it have to be two weeks? You can't, you can't just call and solicit the bids. You don't, it doesn't.
Well, I think that Donald kicks it over the three phone bids. I think it's up to ten thousand.
No, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five for a legal notice.
No.
Twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars is where you do the three quotes. Twenty-five thousand is where you do the three bids.
Right, so it's under twenty-five thousand, so you just need.
Just three phone bids?
Yeah.
But it's still not gonna, it, it doesn't matter whether it's a week or two weeks, it's still not. Under best of circumstances, they're getting back to them in a week, which puts us to July first anyway.
But she said they're until the fourteenth.
That's for the transfer between lines at the end of the year.
So if, if, if he was to get bids tomorrow, if, if he called these people again and asked them to rebid or whatever, and he got the bids tomorrow, then.
He's gonna wait till we come back.
And if he, I don't know if you guys are meeting next Tuesday or not, but if he got, you know, if he did, and the, and the company, I'm just saying, in the, in a perfect world, and then they said, we'll be here in two days and it'll be down, then it could be.
That's a perfect world, but I'm not, I understand what you're saying, but, um, considering what he's gonna do, if he can do it in three or four days, I, I think we, we are meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
Or are we?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's ready by next Tuesday, we sign it. If it's not ready by next Tuesday, by July two, we'll sign it. And we meet that day with you.
All right, then we just put it in reserve and transfer it when we get it. When we get the bill. Easy squeezy. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving.
Dana has something for the board.
Hi, Donna.
I can just squeeze in, um, I had to borrow, to borrow the hundred thousand dollars for sixty days for chapter ninety money that we anticipate spending by June thirtieth and we won't be reimbursed for. We don't want it to come out of our free cash, so.
Donna, that's chapter ninety and the payment money, right?
Yeah, so we need a signature here and here. Point five-five percent.
I certified this note was countersigned and approved by the select board in my presence by the town clerk.
Yeah, well, she knows your signature. She's not doing it tomorrow, she's not here.
No, we're on camera here.
What else?
No, you gotta go into the town clerk's office and sign it, cause you're on camera here.
Yeah, so she's not there, is she?